All right, welcome everyone to the South Township Planning Commission meeting on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Let's start this recording. We are good. All right. A roll call, please.
Roll call the commissioners. Fletcher.
President.
Brandon.
President.
Endall.
Yeah, President.
Overton.
President.
Lloyd.
President.
Moore.
President.
Walsh.
President.
All right, a napton of the agenda. I just want to make one comment. We don't have any information on the ESTF composting. We don't have a complete proposal yet, so we that won't be an agenda item.
I just wanted to see anything in the packet.
It won't be. Any, anything else? Agenda? All right.
Adoption of the agenda.
As amended.
As amended.
And support from Walsh? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The agenda is adapted as modified. Communications and correspondence. Any communication within correspondence? All right. Then we have no presentation, so we'll move to public comment. And people who would like to address the Planning Commission on any matter. We don't have any public hearings this evening, so this is one opportunity, and we also have another public comment at the end of our meeting. So I'll go ahead and open public comment at seven oh two. And welcome anyone that wants to address the Planning Commission. If you come up and identify yourself and sign in.
Not.
Or not. We like observers too. Right, anyone online? No?
We're sure?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, okay.
We need to close public comments.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor to close public comments, please say aye. Any opposed? And public comment is closed at seven oh two. Right? Moving on to approval of the minutes from our last Planning Commission meeting, which was the
I do have a
All righty.
So
One thirty.
On page nine. Number three. Bylaws. On to the third line down. Commissioner Moore raised the concern that the Planning Commissioner Chair or Planning Commissioners, it should be a plural S. Commissioners acting as a consultant on a project within the township that will need approvals by the Commission and the Board of Trustees. And I think this is where I want to insert is a conflict of interest and at the very least, the appearance of a conflict. And sends the wrong message. Blah, 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 blah.
Okay, so inserting
After trustees, board of trustees.
After trustees is a conflict
Is a conflict of interest. And at the very least is an appearance of a conflict. And sends the wrong message.
So it explains it a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Minor update on page eight, just a spell in my last name. At the bottom.
I'm sorry. I didn't catch that. Sorry.
B R A N T. Minor. Where is it?
Under
Eight. At the bottom. We can first third from, third paragraph from the bottom. Mr. Brandon. Oh.
Any other revisions?
With those revisions, I move approval of the minute. Minutes of January thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
There's support? Thank you, Fletcher. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any of us? All right, the minutes are approved as amended. We have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business. We have new business, and so we should have Doug Luhan.
Yes. It was man.
Okay, Matt's here too. Oh, great. The REU guy.
Oh, what a thing to be known for.
All right.
All right.
Okay, and for those new Planning Commissioner members, Doug Luhan has been the planner in, that's been present at the Planning Commission meetings for I don't know.
Two dozen years.
Yeah. Two dozen years? Some, or more than that? And so now he and Laura sort of switched roles, so he's been doing a lot of the reviews and he also does special projects. So he's been, he was working with a group on the Jackson Road. You know, assessment of of where the zoning stood versus, you know, what kind of planning we wanted to do and so forth. And so he's here to kind of report out the findings of that committee, and that's why there was so much documentation there, kind of somewhere, you know, put in all the minutes and some of the maps and so forth. So with that, welcome.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Now you guys can all hear me, I assume?
Yes.
It's nice to be, nice to be here, even if this is virtually in front of a side of township again. So as Jan mentioned, we're going to be talking a little bit tonight about the results of the Jackson Road Advisory Group. That met for about eight months. Talking about some strategies to move the Jackson Road area forward. Right now, we have as, as most of you know, we have an overlay district that covers the Jackson Road corridor from excuse me, from Wagner out to Parker. And it allows some mixed, some mixing of uses. But an overlay district is a, it's a it's a separate zoning district that's laid on top of the existing zoning. So in, in some cases, if you have, if the underlying zoning, if it's the proper district, you can pretty much just do what's permitted in that district. And what we, what we tried to do years ago with the overlay is it, it became apparent that there was some need to have a little more flexibility within the corridor. Because if you look at the underlying districts, you'll have in some cases, pieces of property, several pieces of property that are right next to each other that have different zoning districts. So for example, you could have an office district next to an industrial district, next to a commercial district, next to a residential district. And sometimes, I think there's a few cases where all of those districts are found right exactly next to each other. And the, the problem with that is that you know, you, i- if you have those underlying districts and you have a office district that allows, say, a dentist's office and a commercial district right next to each other that allows commercial uses like retail businesses and things like that, you, you can't switch back and forth. And so there was some desire to allow with, through the overlay district to allow a mixture of uses within the overlay. And the overlay also introduced the possibility of some residential within the corridor. Which we, which we've gotten, you know, some of over the years. So that's kind of the background of the existing, you know, the existing where we're at now with the existing zoning. So that was all presented to the Jackson Road Advisory Group. And we went over existing land use, master plan. You know, some work that had been done with a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the Township Board about kind of their desires for the area. And a lot of that information was contained in the big packet, as was mentioned. There is kind of a summary of, I believe there were five meetings, and we provided a summary of each of those five meetings. Along with kind of a brief minutes, if you will, for each of those meetings. So that's the background. If you hopefully had a chance to look through that, I certainly don't want to go through each of those five meetings. But, but that provided some background about what the Jackson Road Advisory Group went through. So kind of the upshot is we had our last meeting in November of that group. And the the group came up with nine kind of recommendations, goals, direction that they wanted to pass on to the Planning Commission because the idea for this group, the advisory group is that they weren't going to be developing ordinance language. That was going to happen at the Planning Commission. But they were going to help to per, you know, kind of put some arms around the problem and hand off those thoughts and ideas to the Planning Commission to get into what could become some ordinance amendments to the overlay district, or as I'm suggesting, as I'll mention in a few minutes, perhaps a whole new district instead of an overlay district. So on our memo dated December eighteenth, twenty twenty four, there are nine kind of, I call them general statements or general statements of direction and or information that the advisory group thought was important, that, you know, I gleaned from my notes and and in getting back and forth with the group. And those are contained in our December eighteenth memorandum. If you'd like, I can go over those, but I, I trust that you had a chance to review those. And and then we have kind of the, the big part of this and, and, and I'll open this back up to the group because I know there's some of you that, that weren't involved initially in some of these discussions with Jackson Road. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions or comments you might have. But on the second page of that memo, I've got a couple of kind of next steps that I think the Planning Commission could take on. Hopefully, and we'll get, begin to get some direction tonight. If we need a couple of meetings, there's several meetings to hammer this out. That's fine also. But I would like to, where I'd like to get with this is you know, to help, as I say in the memo, to help facilitate the goals above, we'd recommend the development of new ordinance language to replace the Jackson Road Overlay District. I'm proposing instead of an overlay that that's placed on top of the existing zoning, because in those cases, the existing zoning is still there. I'm proposing an entire new district that would roughly be the same location and size of the Jackson Road Overlay District. And I, I'm tentatively, I came up with a name called the Jackson Boulevard District or the JBD. And so that would replace the Jackson Road Overlay District, no longer an overlay district. It would be its own distinct zoning district. And the district would then be divided into various sections. And I, I've, we've had a number of these concepts at the advisory group where we talked about that, you know, there will be certain characteristics of the corridor. And so you'll have core characteristics and then transitional areas between the cores. For example, the, the discussion, the, the kind of broad discussion at the advisory committee was that the cores would generally be located at Wagner, Wagner, Zeeb, and Baker, maybe Stabler. And then there'd be some transitional districts between those three main cores. And there would be some, there would be some characteristics that would be different. I mean, frankly, as you move away from the city of Ann Arbor, we get into more, currently, there's more office and industrial property currently zoned that way. As you get closer to the city of Ann Arbor, there's more retail, commercial type uses. And of course, a big part of this was the allowance of some additional residential density within the corridor. And so that would also be part of, part of this, obviously, that kind of big part of this. The second part of this new zoning district that again, we're caught that I'm tentatively, the ultimate will be up to the Planning Commission, but it's always good to, I like to throw something out and let you guys react to it. That in, in addition to the Jackson Boulevard District, some of the planning commissioners who have been in the commission for a while know that we had been holding the PUD, Planning Unit Development Ordinance kind of in waiting until we got to this point where we could get back to the Planning Commission with discussion of what we were going to do with the Jackson Road Overlay District. So I would suggest that as we move on with the Jackson Boulevard District, that we kind of do that in concert with updating the PUD District. Now that you know, PUD is a huge undertaking. It's a big ordinance. But most of that work has already been done. We've, we've done a lot of work to the, to the PUD ordinance already. And we will be tweaking a few things to make sure it fits in properly with the Jackson, the new Jackson Road District. So in a nutshell, that's what, that's what the summary of the group, the Jackson Road Advisory Group, but again, it's in our memo. I'd be happy to talk about any of those points with you. But that's kind of the summary of where we're at. And I would, I would propose after some discussion with Planning Commission that, you know, we would begin ordinance language of an actual new district that would encompass the Jackson Road Overlay District. The current overlay district. So I know that's a lot, and there was a ton of information in the packet. And it's kind of one of those cases where, you know, how do you eat an elephant? Well, it's just kind of one bite at a time, so we, we have to take that first step. And I think we're kind of getting to that point where we got to take that, you know, kind of launch ourselves into new ordinance language. And it, it, it was that was at least my impression of the direction from the advisory committee was that we were not just going to leave the current Jackson Road Overlay District as is, because that is one of the, that is one of the options that we discussed was just to leave the district as is. But other, rather to get into some kind of ordinance amendment. And with that, I would certainly entertain any questions that you have and try to answer them, or just open it up to listen to your discussion on this matter. So back to you, Jen.
Well, let's start with some questions, and I know Commissioner Moore has some, and do you, anyone else have some?
I might.
Yeah.
So I just want to kind of clarify. In the number one paragraph on page two of the memo, you indicate that you want to replace the Jackson Road Overlay District with the Jackson Boulevard District?
Yes.
So we would not use so that means that we would throw out, I don't mean we would get rid of, I don't I'm not trying to be disparaging, but we would replace the requirements of all the building requirements that we have and all of that.
Yes.
Okay. And is it your understanding that the, the new Jackson Boulevard District would be solely form?
Yes, it would be, it would have a very strong form-based component. However, it's also my understanding that there would be some use, there would still be some use standards.
Okay, because that wasn't my memory that we would just we were getting rid of the J-Rod, but.
Yeah, I think as we just, you know, we're moving along in our discussion, one of the issues that kept coming up is that how Doug started this out is you have industrial, you have commercial, you have office, and that's the underlying zoning. And so
Use zoning.
Use zoning. And so what this would do is would, it would get rid of that underlying use zoning, and it would be called the Jackson Boulevard District with specific uses that were permitted, not permitted, and perhaps conditional uses. So it would be more of a uniformed zoning, so we wouldn't have these buildings coming in and needing a conditional use for ten percent retail, that kind of you know, issue. But I think key is this last point is that as we're shaping that, what are those uses? And are those, and are there, and you know, so the
What are the uses? I'm sorry.
That are, what are the uses that are permitted, are, are not permitted, are, you know, and, you know, that's sort of the, the bulk of it, but it would unify the, the base zoning in that whole district.
Okay.
Sorry, if I, before, before to answer your question, Kim, you're, you are correct in that it's not, you're not going to find anywhere in the minutes or the discussion that, that the group said to throw out the J, the J-Rod.
Okay.
And that was my after looking at the notes and kind of going through my own notes and looking back at everything, I was trying to determine a way forward. And so that, so that's my, this is my proposal of a way forward.
Okay. Fair enough. Because truth be told, we had, there were all new, new people coming to the meetings. We never even got on that level of depth. I mean, I know I mentioned form-based zoning, but I'm not so sure if everybody understood in these meetings what that was about, but.
Yeah, and I think too, we want to make sure, you know, if discuss this here, but also I think Kathleen needs to take it to the trustees because we don't want to launch on something that the trustees are just going to say, I don't think we need to do that.
And so in, in, in another thing about this switching from J, from J-Rod to JBD, we would have to consider what types of things in the J-Rod that we like, because we've often looked to that J-Rod to give direction to developers. Hey, these are the standards we're expecting, like you're not putting up these units on a ceiling of a, in a building without making sure that we, they cannot be seen.
Screening and all of those.
Screening and all that. So the other thing I want to ask is in your paragraph two on that page, you talk about a PUD District. I've never heard it referred to that way. When we went through the ordinance, I guess it's over a year ago, the revisions, it's just been referred to as a PUD ordinance we were revising. This PUD District, what does that mean? Doug?
Well, maybe I should have said PUD regulations or PUD ordinance. But the real, I probably said in, and I mean, it's a good point to bring out because it, it raises a point that maybe some people aren't aware of. The PUD zone, you know, the PUD regulations, once they're adopted, it's a district. I mean, it, it shows up on the zoning map as PUD. And so in effect, once the PUD, you know, in our, in our, in South Township zoning ordinance, PUDs are a they are a, end up being a zoning district. And it's actually listed in the districts and the zoning ordinance. PUD is the last district. So I didn't mean to get into that's wasn't my intention to get into that discussion, but that, that is, it's, it's correct terminology. But you know, PUD is, is a ordinance. It is a regulation within the zoning ordinance. But truth be told, it's also a district.
Hi Doug. Along with that discussion about the PUD District, you stated that high-density residential could only be, well, would have to be in a PUD only. It couldn't be allowed by by right. Is that correct? And the reason for that is that we need to have more control over the numbers because of the water usage, the sewer.
Yes. Yep, that's my, that is my recollection of the discussion, correct?
Yeah, I remember the discussion was about the sewer as well as control, local control.
Is it by right? Then you set things up if you run out of the sewer capacity in it, you have by right coming in, then you set yourself up possibly for a lawsuit or something like that.
Really? Because I thought in the ordinance, it says disclaimer about that it, uh, maybe it's not
It's in the master plan.
That's where it is.
Yeah, it's in the master.
So PUD is the only way to get high-density residential into this new Boulevard District? Okay. And it's only going to be allowed high-density residential where there is sewer.
Yes.
All the outline areas, that's the way to control where they are or where they aren't. And, and avoid lawsuits on that.
Yeah, and you can also, I mean, even within this district, you could differentiate between the core areas. Maybe that is where you want the high-density residential versus the, the, you know, the transitional areas. Yeah. So there's a bunch of discussion that you can do to shape that, that, that corridor.
So that leads to my questions, because I know we did talk about place making core areas. So how would redefining that how would that work if it's one overlook, over, it's not an overlay. It's a district where if I hear it correctly, you can do once you decide the uses, they can be anywhere in that district. So I thought we talked about trying to drive development to certain, certain types of development, whether it was restaurants, Jackson, Wagner,
Yeah.
Jackson, Zeeb, Jackson and Baker.
I thought the same thing. I thought we were going to tie, we had the broad new district with subsections around each of the three nodes or fourth, if we use Stabler, that would tie into how do we want to progress depending on where they are and what are the logical zoning businesses, whatever.
And it was, how do you do that with this proposal?
Yeah, yeah, you, you, you would you, we, I would be proposing exactly that. And so it wouldn't be a blanket district that would cover the whole corridor from Wagner to Parker. There would be there would be differences between, say, the, the, so you've got a, a let's say there's a node or a core area at Wagner, and let's say there's a core area at Zeeb. There could be more or less, and with this, this is just for example. And then that link between Wagner and Zeeb could have certain uses permitted, or you know, again, more of, have some form-based ideas, but uses permitted, uses prohibited. And then the link between Zeeb to Stabler, Stabler being another core, that could have a slightly different character. And so it doesn't have to be a blanket. It would still be, there would still be some different there'd be some differentiation between the uses we would permit within the corridor. And we could, you know, there's a lot of different ways you can do that. And we've, we've done this in other communities where you know, we have a core area, transition area, an outline area, whatever you want to call them. And that's what I would propose here, but I, I would not propose that we do a single district that has the same standards for the entire district. There'd be some differences.
Yeah.
I know you may not be done, but I just, a suggestion might be that in our sub-area of our sub-areas that we define in the master plan, better calling it the Jackson Road Subarea. There's where we would call it a Jackson Boulevard Subarea rather than District. It is a it will have districts within it that I think is what I'm hearing. So why not call it a sub-area, Jackson Boulevard Subarea?
Well, the, the terminology, we can call it whatever we want to end up calling it, but it, it but typically the sub, sub-area terminology is, is more of a terminology you would use in the master plan as opposed to the zoning.
That's what I was suggesting.
Yeah.
In the master plan, we call it that.
Oh, sure, you could, absolutely. We'd have to amend the master plan.
But we have to update the master plan.
And, yeah.
So, and if I could ask Commissioner Hyde, so you're thinking for continuity purposes?
Right, you're supposed to plan and then write your ordinance. So we need to have something in the master plan to define what we're intending to do. Then we do it in the ordinance.
Yeah, I, I, I will, I don't mean, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think and Jan and I had this conversation a while back, and I don't know if you remember, Jan, but I believe there's enough in the current master plan to support what we're doing. I think the current master plan, when you talk about the Jackson Bull, the Jackson Boulevard area, whatever we call it, there's enough discussion in there. In fact, it's, it's, it's specific enough where it starts to talk about form-based code issues and things like that. In fact, it's, it's, it's specific enough where it starts to talk about form based code issues and things like that. I'm, I'm confident that we would not be in any issue. Uh, by just going into this ordinance. I I think the current master plan. Um, the current master plan lays out enough detail that what what we're doing. Is uh, would be acceptable in my opinion.
And we even talk about farm based um, guidelines in there, so.
Yeah, I I think there's enough, there's enough discussion in the Jackson Road. Um, overlay or the sub area within the master plan that um. It 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 supports what we're proposing here, is what I'm trying to say.
This is essentially an effort to update J rod, calling it something different to tie into the current master plans, what it really sounds like.
Yeah, it's a little bit different because I think in this is the distinction. At first, we thought we would, we might look at updating that overlay.
Right.
But really what we're doing is going back and you making it more of a uniform.
Right.
Rather getting rid of all the singular underlying zoning. And, yeah. So it makes it more flexible and, yeah.
So how does that impact property owners? Let's say that they have zoning that they like. And it that use doesn't come forth in the planning process.
Hmm, that's a good question. Yeah, go ahead, because then you end up with, i- if, I guess there are a couple of situations. One, does it become nonconforming? Do you write something in, you know, the district that talks about that, the existing uses, et cetera? So maybe Doug can.
Well, we would, we would um, we would hope to minimize those situations. But there will, you know, likely be some situations where the ultimate zoning may not exactly conform to what's on the ground. Um, and in those cases, there's a couple of things that would happen. First, let's, we'd have to back up. That everyone within this district would have to be notified by mail. Because this is a rezoning, so every property owner, the way that property, the way that rezonings occur. Particularly um, large scale rezonings is, um, well, let me, let me back up a little bit. Um, if there are eleven, so, okay, the more I think about this, the individual properties may not. Be required to be notified, but the township may want to do that. And the reason I say that is if you have, if you're proposing a rezoning. That has eleven or more contiguous pieces of property. Public Act one ten, which is the zoning enabling act, does not require uh, individual property notification. This will invariably impact more than eleven contiguous properties along the corridor. So technically, this would be considered a township wide rezoning. Township wide rezonings only have to be noticed in a public paper. Due to what um, Commissioner Brandt brought up. It would be, you know, it'd be my recommendation that, one, we try to work with the property owners and, two, everyone should be notified. Uh, and when that time comes, just so they have an opportunity to provide input. Um, is it, is it required by law? No, it's not required, but it's a, it's a, it would be a good idea that they were notified. If the rezoning went through and underlying properties were uh, determined to be. Nonconforming based on the new standards, which again, we try to minimize because it is, the idea is a form based code. So we're trying to allow as many uses as possible, so hopefully that won't happen very often. But if it did happen, those underlying properties would be considered legal nonconforming properties. And they could uh, continue to operate indefinitely. Um, they could be sold and operated indefinitely. Uh, but there would be some potential issues if those properties ever need to be expanded. That's when, that's when the issue comes up. Um, so yeah, there's always, whenever you do a township wide rezoning, there's always. The, it, there's always the concern that some properties might become nonconforming. But if you think about Sienna Township back in the early seventies before there was zoning. And all of a sudden, Sienna Township's Planning Commission and Township Board decided to adopt the first zoning map in Sienna Township. And they laid down zoning across the entire township. You can imagine at that point, there were a number of properties that were nonconforming. Uh, because there was no zoning before the early seventies in Sienna Township. So, and that, that's happened across the state of Michigan and across the country. That's just, that's what happens when communities do a community wide rezonings. So, you know, very good question and one that, you know, we, I don't know how many properties would be impacted. Because we have not developed language yet about what the mixed use districts will be. But it would be our intention to minimize those, you know, those cases as much as possible.
Um, Doug, how hard would it be to identify probable um, nonconforming properties?
Um. Well, we'd have to know what, you know, we don't know exactly what the uses will, you know, what, what uses are we going to propose in which segments of Jackson? So we'd have to kind of have an idea of what, where we're going. But once we have that idea of where we're going, it would be relatively simple through um, you know, our GIS, uh, GIS. Software to to identify those and develop.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So you you think that once we come up with, uh, at least the first draft, we could look at.
That that would not, it would not be difficult.
Yeah, keep a tally on that thing, yeah, okay.
That that would not be difficult at all, yeah.
So I would like to, because I think um, this is a bigger discussion than just the recommendations in your memo. Or Laura's memo. I'd like you to speak about what the positive aspects are of the J rod. Uh, ordinance are.
The boulevard or the overlay?
You mean the the change or the way it is now?
I said J rods.
Yeah, the, the Jackson Road Overlay District, J rod.
The existing J rod, what's correct, the positive part, yeah.
It, well, um, it's, you know, my experience, we, we uh, we developed that language. You know, fifteen years, maybe twenty years ago now, fifteen years ago. Um, with the subcommittee, kind of like we did previously. And it has, it it, it ushered in um, and you know, this idea of mixed use development. Where before the Jackson Road Overlay District. It was strictly, as I mentioned when I started, you know, if you had the zoning. That's all you, you know, that's what you did. You had commercial zoning, you did commercial, if you had office, you did office. You had industrial, you did industrial, and never the three shall meet in any way, shape or form. Um, the uh, when we brought the Jackson Road Overlay District together. It introduced this idea of uh, mixed use development. And allowing uh, through other, other means other than a rezoning. Um, the, through conditional use, for example, the, the Jackson Road Overlay District allows. Any, almost any use permitted in the zoning district, there are some, there are some restrictions. But a number, I should say, a number of uses that are permitted in the zoning district and under the current Jackson Road Overlay District. You can do as a special land use. Um, and that has allowed, I don't have a list, but I know it has allowed um, some developments to occur within the Jackson Road corridor. That never would have occurred before. Um, when we first proposed the Jackson Road Overlay District. Uh, there was pushback from the business community. Because we introduced um, architectural standards and some other design standards to the corridor. Uh, for example, the uh, the ornamental knee wall feature. Um, some landscaping, some corner feature requirements, uh, if you're on a prominent corner within the corridor. And some of the uh, business folks that were on the subcommittee didn't like that. But I will also say the same business folks who didn't like it, you know, five years later, five to ten years later. Did like the district because it allowed a number of developments that would have been impossible uh, without the Jackson Road Overlay District. So it's been a good ordinance, I believe. And um, uh, it certainly could continue. I mean, I'm, I'm proposing a way forward that would, that would do what I believe. That would allow the uh, um, development of some language and some, some ways forward. That I, that I think was the direction I felt from the Jackson Advisory Group. Uh, could we do that by tweaking the Jackson Road Overlay District? We, we may be able to. Um, but uh, the district, in my opinion, has been a success. In that it's introduced this concept of mixed use development within the corridor. So I don't know if that answers your question, Kim, but that's, that's my.
No, it did, it did, and it makes me think of another question I have for you. What would be a really changing to the JBD, I believe that's the initials. What would be one of the most controversial projects, one of the most controversial changes to form based? And what we do now? If you can think of something.
Um.
Because I'm trying to get, I like to where I asked this question, I'm trying to get at, things sound really good on paper. When we did the training a couple of years ago, we learned a lot about the, the MSU. Extension.
Yeah, the citizen planner.
Citizen planner. Uh, I was very intrigued by the form based, we got to talking to the three of us that that attended and um. And, but I want to be careful in terms of planning to make sure that we don't throw out. The good parts of the J rod and also be cognizant of uh, the possibility of creating um, bad change. So I can't think of that, I don't know enough about planning, to be honest with you, to be able to, to um, to flag that. But um, because it sounds really good when we say. Use based, which is what we have now, these, you can only be in this district, district of, you're the, fit the parameters of what the district calls for. Um. So I guess that's what I'm trying to, trying to understand better.
And maybe. Uh, yeah, what I'm thinking is maybe what would be helpful is to come up with a, um, you know, we. We we refer to the goals of the, that we discussed with the J reg. But maybe we need to come up with what we really want to accomplish with this district. And and why this initiative is good. Uh, because I think with Kathleen having to, uh, we want the trustees also to, to, because it's an investment. I mean, either way, updating the J rod or doing.
And I've seen it, I've seen it happen in Pittsfield and how they view is form based, I've seen it, but.
Yeah, and it, and so, you know, I think. One of the, the biggest things is to be able to achieve, you know, Kathleen, what you were talking about is these. You know, sort of the cores that really can be live, work, play, connected. It, you know, and also be able to support it with good public transit. Um, and be more flexible in, in um, sort of the flow of uses. That we find that we want in the, in the district.
So for instance.
Hmm.
We had a young uh, gentleman here recently uh, wanting to do his logging, creating firewood business. And it created a problem because it didn't fit in that district. Or would we, with form based, would we allow logging, creating firewood business on the Jackson Road corridor? I mean, that's just a, I'm just trying to put it into some. In in some perspective and how it would, how it could change for the worse. I don't know, maybe we'll get all of the permitted uses in that area. And then try to envision what uses are desired and compatible. In certain parts of Jackson Road. A good example, I think, is um, Holmes Campus, which is a, uh, Jackson industrial. If I look at uh, the master plan, it's, it's office industrial, but what they did was. It's industrial because they manufacture a product. But they also have a very nice setting for people to come and consume that product plus food trucks plus.
Yeah, it it makes, it makes it an industrial space. It's place making, right?
Yeah.
But within, yeah, and and some of the things that have happened along, um. You know, with the uh, pickleball, you know, the recreation uses, you know, some of those things. Um, and then folks having to come and get conditional uses for what would seem to be to be, should be permitted. Um, you know, in that kind of area, I could see wanting conditional uses if it were in a residential area or something that is.
Is it reasonable to look at all the current permitted uses? And then say, there are some that we really don't want here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or in certain areas, yeah, I think that, I mean, that would be a great matrix to, to look at. And I think some of the discussion that we've had were, where does it make sense to permit drive-throughs? Where does it make sense to have, you know, we have a lot of storage. Um, the car dealerships, you know, there are some, some key kind of hot point uses. That, you know, and then, you you know, the discussion about, you know, auto body repair, some of those other things is that something, you know. And he, your car washes.
Yeah.
Hmm, truck stops, you know, that kind of thing, you know, what are we visualizing, you know, along? And where, yeah, so that, yeah, absolutely, that would be a really important part of that. And what you said, also, the, the, you don't want to lose some of the positive things from a, you know, the architectural, which is really. How you apply the form base then, within the district, in that form may be a little different in a core area versus in a transitional area too.
And if I could add, um, so Kim is talking about like unintended consequences of, you know, adopting a form based code. And so, you know, you know, good questions, and actually, I like uh, Kathleen's comment about. Um, listing all the uses, permitted uses, special uses, that, that's something we could easily do, which would be a good, a good step. Um, but when you think about a form based code, there's like, think of like a continuum. Uh, and and so on one side of the continuum, you've got pure, you know, like a pure form based code. Which is like no use standards. And and it's, it's more, you know, form based code is interested in the form of the development. You know, what does it look like from the road? What are the driveway access points? What are the pedestrian points? What's the architecture look like? Where's the building positioned on the lot? Where's the parking position down the lot? That's like, with, with, with almost no regard to the use. So I'm not suggesting that pure form of form based code. And then there's the other side of the continuum is straight zoning, like we have, well, we have an overlay, so we don't even have straight zoning. We're, we're like somewhere kind of in the middle right now. But, you know, I would say the continuum wouldn't be the pure form based code. We would still have new standards, there'd still be some new standards. There would be a form based code, there would be the idea of mixed uses being permitted uh, in the various. You know, transitional areas and coded uh, uh, core areas. But um, to help reduce some of those unintended consequences, we would. We would still, at least I believe, what I would propose is we would still do some kind of um. You, there'd still be some uses discussed in every one of those areas. We're not just going to say, here's the design, we don't care what you do, you know, have that, you know, I think. That's, and some communities have done that.
Sure.
I've been trying to simplify it my own since I was in the part of all. Previous to, and to me, this just seems like, getting back to the elephant, we're not eating the elephant, starting with one bite. J rod's a starting point, and it's a good starting. What we're doing is saying, all right, given where we envision the township going, how do we make this fit? Because J rod's bulk, and we're now seeing that there's sections that we want to specify so that you can't do everything across the board. We're trying to push use into specific areas and prevent some uses in those areas. So all we're doing is carving up J rod and essentially calling it something new is. To a certain extent, how I'm trying to get my mind around this.
And I think in the other thing, we're also trying to add flexibility for creativity with it, within this district.
And that's.
So it can be, you know, that, that, you know, you can have, you can do a range of things.
Right.
Yeah.
That, that for me gets into the uses where. That that for me gets into the uses we're allowing in specific areas. And I may have the terminology wrong, but that's just lack of experience.
Doug, um, the J rod district, I mean, current J rod does not cover. All of the sewer and water district, is that correct? Like, what what is the name of that development that's over off of Miller? That's in a sewer and water. Covered area, coverage area, but that's not part of J rod.
Yeah.
Walden Ridge, thank you.
That is like the outlier.
Is that the only outlier, or is this southwest? I mean, southeast corner in the J rod?
It it's, that might be one of the only outlier. I I'd have to look the. The Jackson Road Overlay District um, is based on, to to a certain degree. It's based on frontage on Jackson. So there's, there's three elements of the Jackson Overlay District. It's based one on frontage on Jackson, and it has to be. Don't quote me, but I think it has to be a hundred fifty feet of frontage on the road. So if you had a piece of property even on Jackson Road that had less than a hundred fifty feet, it's not technically in the Jackson Road Overlay District. So and then there was also a segment on Wagner. There's a segment on Zeeb and a segment on. Uh, went down, went down to Liberty, went, the the Wagner went went right down to Liberty. And then there was a segment, a north-south segment at Wagner, Zeeb, and um, I think Stabler. Uh, so I, so anyway, it it was based on. It's based on frontage, believe it or not, of the roads. Um, and I think if you had a hundred fifty feet of frontage. Uh, you're in, but if you didn't, there, cause that that just goes back to how we tried to even create the Jackson Road Overlay District. You know, that that, there was a lot of debate on who was gonna be in and who was gonna be out. And so, you know, we just came up with a linear footage, you know, frontage requirement on Jackson Road. And Wagner and Zeeb and Stabler, maybe Baker, I'll have to look, so, but um. So I don't, I sorry to make a long answer, but I I don't, I don't recall. I'd have to look, I'd have to look.
Yeah, so it may be good to also just kind of assess the boundary. To see if it if it needs to be adjusted in any way. It it while we're looking at it, because things have changed since that overlay district was created.
Okay, good. I can't agree with that. And it may be that in the discussion about. Form-based zoning versus the PUD. In the PUD, we wanna be very clear that it's all of the sewer water district. And but.
The sewer district, I think.
Sewer.
I think we were.
Right, it's not the water, it's not the same, you're right, not totally the same. And then. The Boulevard District would be uh, whatever we wanna make of it that's surrounding the Boulevard. Not necessarily on it, but surrounding it.
Although it could go all the way, I think Wagner would be. It it still is on Wagner and that seems to make sense.
And I'm wondering about Liberty, but that doesn't really matter.
Yeah, I think the character of Liberty is really different.
But we can discuss that.
Yeah.
Discuss the notes.
But I think.
Wagner note would be, do we go all the way to Liberty or not, or?
And I, but I think the border discussion is an important discussion.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, anything? Maybe else? So, um.
This is an introduction. To the handoff.
Yes, yeah, so I think it would be good to um, check the temperature of the trustees. Uh, just to say, and and I think maybe we can put together, I mean, certainly this memo would be good to share and then. Um. The the reasons why we would want to do this. Um, and we can.
He's pointing at you and I'm not sure what.
Yeah. Okay.
It's a good show for the chair.
Um, and and then just to make sure that, you know, you know, what are their thoughts? You know, is it it is, this is strong enough reason to make this investment in in doing this and in looking, you know. Forward to what we're doing. And it's good timing because we can. Roll in some of the stuff that we're doing with the complete streets at the same time.
So it's the master plan due for renewal next year?
It's due for, we are supposed to review it for sure and then determine whether or not to. Um, before with a an update with it. Yep.
When is that due?
It's every five years officially, right Doug? You you have to specifically review.
Every five years. And the the Planning Commission, it kind of starts with the Planning Commission and. What you, what you do is you put it on the agenda as an item. And you could do uh, one of three things. Uh, you could, you know, put it on an agenda. And if the Planning Commission made a motion that said, yep, master plan's good. Well, you're technically you're good for five more years. You know, you don't have to worry about it for five years. It's simply really, truly as simple as that. Um, or you could say, yeah, most of the master plan's good. But there's a couple of areas we wanna look at, and those would be considered like a sub-area plan. You could do, you could leave most of the master plan the way it is. And just look at a couple key target areas or sub-area that you'd like to amend or change or explore more. Or you could start from scratch and just start over. And that would be the, that would be a big effort. Um, uh. The the last couple of master plan amendments, we probably kept. You know, fairly high percentage of at least the form and content of the previous plan. We might have amended, you know, moved things around and changed things. Uh, but mostly, you know, you wanna update the census and information and stuff like that, but. Just so you know, I mean, there's no obligation. For a community to uh, make major changes. If you think the master plan still represents what you believe the residents of the township want. Then you're perfect, it's perfectly acceptable just to say, put it on a planning commission agenda, have a planning commission make a motion. And technically, you're good for five more years. So it's really, really depends on how far you guys wanna.
That call this year is because it has to be next year. Updated, if that's what we decide. We could take a year.
Yeah, so we should probably look at that for the, and so. That would be, and be good to have some input from the trustees on that too, and that should be just something that. To think about.
We started a list of things we wanted to.
Yeah, we have that list. The chickens are still on it.
Would you say?
The chickens are still on it.
On that list.
Yeah, okay, yeah, all right. Um, anything else for for Doug? So we'll take, well, I mean, it it sounds like. It's worth discussing either way. I mean, we could also get into it and decide, oh, we can just don't bait the overlay. Too, but it sounds like looking at uses, looking at boundaries. Um, uh, is kind of a a a good starting point, no matter where, you know. What the end result is and taking the temperature of the trustees.
Yeah, I think at some point we should have a joint meeting, not a voluntary joint meeting, right? It's that you really expect um, the two bodies to come together. Then you can start to call a lesson on um. You know, what would you like in this area? What do you envision this could be like? What about this area?
Yeah, so I think the first one is to sort of take the temperature, can we, we wanna dig a little bit deeper into this and. Um, and then, once we start having that visualization, having a a manned, uh. Well, it's hard to make it mandatory, but yeah, a a joint meeting, call a joint meeting, so it's an official. Uh, official joint meeting to talk about some of the key elements.
I would just say that at about three of our meetings, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug. It came up about. How does the 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 J reg meetings? How does the, how are we gonna preserve our rule? The rural nature of our community. And I was perplexed about why that would come up. In the, in the um, Jackson Road Advisory Group. Cause it was limited to Jackson Road, but. I I I say this because I've I've had a couple of conversations with a couple of board trustees and. They get those questions too, and so, um. In discussions with the board of trustees and sort of people have a way of talking to the community, um. One of the things that that we're trying to do is we're with the the PUD in this, in our discussions. Um. We're trying to. Stop PUD development in the rural parts of our community. So that's number one. And that's part of what we have discussed as part of our PUD revision ordinance revisions. Um, and then, the other thing I think is, is like I've learned since being on the commission is that. You know, we can't stop development, um, but we can steer, we can guide, that kind of thing, and I think that. You know, we need to steer and guide along Jackson Road. Um, and uh. And so that's what this is an effort to do and also address all these issues that have been coming up. In the Planning Commission over the last couple of years, the the lack of res- residential. Using more mixed-use residential commercial on Jackson Road. Because while J rod addressed that and has language in J rod, it hasn't been utilized very well. Or it hasn't been utilized much. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to throw that in there.
It's hard to push it there unless we are overt about it. You may have meant something different than what I heard, that's often. My understanding was we weren't eliminating PUDs in the outlying areas, we were limiting bonus. Density in a PUD in the outlying areas. You could only get the bonus density, I thought. If you're in the sewer district, you can still do a PUD, cause then you can cluster and keep the surrounding area. Natural, so it would look like it was um. Lower density, but. No, I didn't mean that. It looks like it would be rural, however, you wouldn't be able to add on a bonus density for doing this or that. Unless you were in the sewer.
I would say that both of those concepts were discussed.
Yes.
And I do think that the community is concerned about large developments. I don't care if they're clustered or otherwise. I E, look at what's going on. I mean, that's, I just, I was gonna bring up KFC, but that's really more complicated with the plume and stuff, but. Um, I think there are. There is concern in the community about putting up large. Developments in our rural area of the community. I think there, that is a concern.
And Doug, do you wanna just briefly talk, cause there is, there is a Michigan law. That you you have to allow for the clustering piece, right?
Uh.
Yeah.
Well, you you, I mean, a lot, a lot of different concepts going going on here, but I I would agree with. Him in that both of those concepts were certainly discussed. And so we have to figure out which direction we're gonna go. Um, but the uh, the clustering concept is kind of a separate thing and that's um. Uh, Public Act one ten, which is a zoning enabling act, requires, we cannot not have clustering in our zoning. So it's required, you have to have it, and it is, it's in our zone. So, so you you do have to allow buster housing. Um, regardless of the zone district. But I think the real key here is um, the the whole density bonus issue. Because, you know, what's the point of? You know, if if you can't get a density bonus, what are you doing a PUD for? And so I think that'll stop the PUDs right there if someone's not gonna get a density bonus. Um, cause a PUD, let's face it, I mean, you guys have sat through some, PUDs are. Difficult and PUDs are long. And PUDs, once they're approved, they're difficult to amend. I mean. There there's not, I don't know of a developer these days that want, that willingly will go into a PUD. They're they're difficult, they're ugly. You can't amend them once they're approved. I mean, you can, but it's a a terrible process. So. It it's, it's not something that people go into in a kind of willy-nilly fashion, but. If you, and if you take away the little incentive that there is to do one for residential PUD, and that's the density bonus. I don't know why a developer would even want to even try a PUD frankly. Now, that's my opinion, but I I think, I think that's true. So, um. Anyway, that, I think, I think the density bonus is the big issue.
Let me have latched onto that in in the wrong manner, but that's what I thought the key was.
All right, so we'll go ahead and take the temperature of the trustees and I think the next, I think your idea of, you know. Looking at boundary, looking at the, you know, having that use discussion, so.
Yeah, um, I'm just mentioning another thing, um. I think that balance. Residents are supporting land preservation in parks and the which, so we have to consider that. That LPC has. Um, graded areas of the township that are desirable. So we should not, we should include those. Those people in this discussion because that is the rural nature that people in general would like. So I think we've made some missteps in a couple of places, but as long as we keep them in the discussion.
Good point. Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Uh, this, thank you for pulling it together in a cohesive manner. Cause it it was a little hurting cats.
So would you, would you guys like me to put together that map that shows the exact Jackson Road versus the sewer service district? And then put together a list of all the permitted uses within the district?
Sure, yep. I think that's great. And I think it it's probably permitted, but also the, you know, what's conditional too, if there's a way. Cause yeah, that's where we've gotten into some. Interesting discussions. All right, thank you, Doug.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next up is our accessory solar ordinance.
This is this me as well? Yeah.
And oh, I just wanted to say, any other questions for Matt at O H M? Cause I know there was some of the, you know, the report on the REUs and so forth. Were there any? Oh, it's Stacy, okay, Stacy and Matt, and Matt, before we, yeah.
Uh, Stacy, I don't know if you would know this, um, but do you know where we stand on calculating? The number of REUs that are remaining? Has that been done, or is that in the process, or?
That hasn't been done yet and um, it's, I believe included in the CIP. Uh, the metering study has to be performed. Matt might have a better idea of the timeline of that, but it is being discussed about when that's going to take place.
I think that would be important. We need to know the timeframe so we know when we have that data.
Yeah, it, this is Matt Parks. Um, it'll all depend on the budget getting approved. And then in April, we would expect to be asked for a proposal to start the the metering. Um, and. There's some other capital improvements that are being proposed also, so. It's all gonna be dependent on that. I mean, I think you guys can run with, you know, we've been approximating about twelve hundred REUs left. In the overall system and that's again theoretical. Yeah, in order for us to get an exact perfect number, that metering definitely needs to be done, but. I think that's a pretty close bet and it's probably gonna be accurate within ten percent. So, I mean, it needs to be done.
I thought we were working with the twenty-three hundred.
Uh, well, that's full system. I'm talking about, I don't know if we're talking about just Jackson Road or or what, but. But we confirm that up. We're also, the other thing that is being talked about, and I haven't gotten any direction from the board or or. Uh, the manager, but we're supposed to be coming in and doing a presentation on overall utilities, REUs, et cetera. Um, either for. Um, either for the board of trustees or it's been talked about a joint meeting and I don't know if that's gonna happen in April or May or what. So we're kind of waiting on direction from the board and when to move forward and prep for that. Um, just as an educational series with new planning commissioners, new board of trustees members, so we're, we're on standby, ready to, ready to go. But no, Kim, I don't remember, twenty-three seems like too big of a number, so I don't know.
It was part of the, um, a presentation that was done to the, or information provided to the board trustees when we met. I had part of that. It was provided to us.
Okay, I'll, I'll go back and refresh my memory.
Twenty, twelve hundred was revised.
Yeah, and that may or may not been including like some of the developments that are under construction right now, so I can, I can pull that back up and we can reforward that to Jan. She can distribute it to the planning commission, just so you guys have the latest and greatest. But to, Stacy's right. I mean, in order for us to to kind of true up and we do do this like every four or five years, um, because everything that we calculate is theoretical. Um, the metering study really helps and Brandon, the utilities uh, director has been proposing to do some um, pipe rehab and looking at trouble spots. So that can actually have a positive impact. So even though you're approving a thirty RU site here or seven RU site there. If utilities can be proactive and go in and do some lining and do some maintenance, um, you can save yourself, you know, additional uh, inflow and infiltration. So cause all Eagle and the city of Ann Arbor care about is how much flow is coming at us. They don't really care about theoretical. That's just a, that's just a planning tool that we use to make sure we're not over capacity.
Yeah, this would be the stuff from July twenty twenty-one. If you're looking at an analysis of REUs and sewer stuff.
Okay, yeah, that's dated. So I think we're, we're closer to that twelve hundred number that I was talking about. Cause that includes Woodview Commons, Sci-O View, uh, the rest of Trailwoods, um, and all the other miscellaneous development. And I think that includes, you know, assuming crossroads and some other, other developments coming online, so.
Woodview Commons is in here, Trailwoods is in here too. Twenty-one to August of twenty-four.
Twenty-four? You said twenty-one, so.
I know. I'm sorry, REUs approved August twenty-one to, I'm sorry. REUs approved twenty-twenty-one to August of twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, yeah, no big deal. And yeah, it's hard to know what you're looking at, but I'll, I'll, I'll resend that, cause I know, I know what meeting you're talking about and I remember it. Um, we can, we can pull that together and just recirculate it and make sure we're all on the same page. But that'll be part of our presentation to the board and the planning commission too, so.
Yeah, man, I do have a, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, that's okay, go ahead.
Um, the one question I had is when you do the, you know, when you do the study, is it possible to also get, I'm just thinking of like Woodview Commons is a huge development and yeah, we have no idea exactly what the occupancy of it is yet. And I would think that that would be a really important to know, the occupancy, you know, when you're, when you're doing the metering too. Is there a way to do that?
Um, well, yeah, I mean, we can see how many zoning compliance and, and and CVOs were granted, but I think that's part of the timing too. Um, we meet here in the exact same spots that we met hered last time, so we can see changes in those districts. So we break up metering districts. And then when you look at the change, if it's in an area where we expect change, like west down Jackson Road in front of Woodview Commons and we see an uptick in the flow, that makes sense, right? But when you see an uptick in flow in an area where there hasn't been any new development, you know that that's a source of inflow and infiltration. So that really helps Brandon target it. So it's kind of a chicken or the egg thing. Do you want to get Brandon going on televising and figuring out where there's some known problems? And then we go meter and then we follow up on that, or do we meter? So he has an idea of where the problems are and, and there's benefits to both. Um, and that's gonna be up to him and, or the board of trustees to decide, you know, the timing on all that. And honestly, since, you know, the beginning of this year and since the election, we really are just been focused on getting the CIP approved, which I think is done and now it's budgeting. And once that all gets approved, I think a lot of wheels will be in motion. But until then, we're kind of stuck, kind of just waiting. But the timing right now, nothing's gonna happen in the middle of winter. We deploy those meters, you know, in the spring and we try to get a good eight to nine months of data during the rainy seasons. That's really the key time to do it anyways.
Okay, alright, thanks. Any other questions for Stacy or Matt? Okay, thank you for um, attending tonight.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. Um, yeah, I think uh, if you guys wanna, uh, if there are any, if, if there's anything else that you wanna report, why don't you do that now and then you can leave? Cause I don't think anything else um, will be coming up on, on the agenda for you.
I don't think we have anything else to report.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you. I appreciate your time and uh, we'll, we'll see you next meeting.
Sounds good. Have a good night.
Yep, thanks. Alrighty, um, then we'll move to the solar ordinance. Alright. So Doug, did you want to introduce sort of where we're at?
Yeah, yeah, so um there's been a, as you know, over the last several months, Laura has provided um, some overall energy ordinance provisions. And then along, you know, with this discussion has, has come the uh, the issue of accessory use uh, solar. Or at, in essence, what would be accessory use solar for uh, individual homes. So whether that be on the roof of a home or in a small solar array or field that's separate from the home and, and one of the yards of the home. And um uh, the language that is in a memo from Laura that's dated uh, January twenty-first is um, the underlying language is actually currently in the zoning ordinance. Laura just moved it to this location. But it, it sort of, the idea was to confirm that um, building and ground mounted solar for, you know, individual homes or commercial businesses would be considered accessory structures. That's currently in the ordinance, so that's not new, but it, it was moved here to make it a little clearer. So, for example, right now, if you've, you know, you got your home in SiO Township or business in SiO Township and you want to create a solar that's not on the roof, they would apply to the township. They would apply for a zoning compliance of the township that would go to Laura. Um, and then she would sign off on if it met all the setbacks and she would look at it just as if it was a garage or a pole bar or, you know, what if some other accessory structure. And then, so we look at it on your plot plan, you make sure it's got the side rear setbacks that meets all the side mirror setbacks as any structure, then we sign off on it. Everyone's happy to go on their way and then build their solar. Which, when I was signing off on the zone, when I was signing off on all the zoning compliances, you know, a year and a half ago, uh, for many years, um, as solar became more popular, uh, this was not, it's not that uncommon. I mean, we get numerous zoning compliance permits for roof mounted. Every, every day, it seemed like people were bringing in roof mounted solar permits and those are easy, those you don't even have to worry about setbacks, cause those are on the roof, so those are signed off. Uh, is part, you know, just a part of zoning compliance, cause you have to sign off on a zoning compliance certificate before the builder can get a building permit. That's kind of the, that's kind of the hammer that the township has is the county building department won't grant a building permit until they get a zoning compliance. So they have to come to the township for everything before the building department will issue building permit. So, most of these, so this, the roof mount are easy, the, the ground mounted um, become a little trickier because sometimes based on, just like any accessory structure, based on issues with the lot, whether it's steep slope or a wetland or a pond, um, existing locations of structures, you know, you name it. There could be a reason why, you know, you can't meet the setback uh, for, you know, the, the accessory structure setback. So, you know, in a long explanation, sorry about long explanation, but long explanation is that, and I think Laura mentioned some questions here at the end of her memo. Should, in essence, should there be some um latitude given to solar accessory structures, ground mounted accessory for single family homes and businesses, single commercial, that could happen for a commercial business as well. Um, should they be allowed to locate a ground mounted solar closer to a rear or side property line than an accessory structure like a pole bar? So that, that really is the crux of the question. Um, and then uh, one of the other issues that is raised in this memo is if we do that, should we provide additional screening to the residents? Now, I will say, um, I do work with the zoning board of appeals now. Um, pretty much go to all their meetings and, and assisting Laura with the ZBA uh, reviews. And um, we did have one of these, as you, as you probably are mostly aware, uh, that was denied uh, about two months ago. And um it was denied because frankly, variances should be hard to get, you know, variances, there's very strict criteria for variance to be granted. And uh, there has to be what's called practical difficulty, which is uh, you have to show that there's something different, uniquely different about your property that's different than other properties similarly zoned. And if you can't prove that, which frankly is difficult, if you look at the standards that the zoning board of appeals is supposed to enforce, um, getting a variance is not an easy proposition. So um, uh, it was denied and I think there was uh, there was some concern from the members of the zoning board of appeals and, and, you know, Jan, you correct me if I'm overstating this. But I, I think there was some concern that, well, we had to deny it because they didn't meet the criteria for a variance. But maybe this is something that the planning commission could look at. Uh, because, you know, the person who came in front of the zoning board of appeals, it, you know, seemed to make perfect sense what they were doing. But just this, the, the strict guidelines that the zoning board of appeals has to meet, they, they had a hard time proving it. In fact, they denied it. So um, that's where we sit. Do we want to give some kind of allowance to uh, ground mounted solar? I think really is the question.
Can I ask a simple question? Is the rooftop mounted if not considered, you don't have to go through the accessory process?
Well, you do, you have to get a um, yeah, you, you still have to get a zoning compliance from the township and then a building permit from the county building department. So it's the same.
It's not considered, is it, is that, it's rooftop as well as ground mounted, both are considered accessory?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so you still have to go through the same process. But the rooftop are just pretty much automatic, because they're not extending into setbacks, they're not, you know. Frankly, once they're up, you don't even notice they're there pretty much.
One, one question Doug, uh, we don't consider rooftop solar, let's say it's a non-conforming building. Um, that, we haven't considered that being an issue if you put it on the roof of a non-conforming building for that portion of the building that's not conforming. I, I just wouldn't want that to be an issue.
No, no, I would look at that, if I was reviewing the zoning compliance still, I would say that if the building itself was in the side yard setback or the rear, you know, whatever setback, um, I would look at the roof mounted and as long as, it's like any new structure, as long as it's not making the non-conformity worse, then I'm, I would sign off.
Okay.
If, if for some reason it extended over the edge of the roof, which they never do, but you know, if it had some oddity that made it extend further into the setback, I guess that'd be a problem, but I've never, I've never seen.
Okay, okay, good. Alright, so then it would just be ground mount basically that we're talking.
Yeah.
So this language and the first page of the memo of January twenty-first, twenty-two. Um, it makes an exception for R three, which is um, residential in smaller lots where public sanitary sewer and water services are available.
It's existing, like.
That's the, that's the district R three.
That's in this section three six ninety-three already. Yeah, there's nothing new.
This is, this that's underlined is all.
The part above that where it mentions the R three district is what I thought you were talking about.
No, I'm talking about the, this underlying language.
Okay, the building mounted, the ground mounted.
Right, right. So I'm just wondering why um, and I apologize, I'm just trying to get, wrap my head around this. Why an exception is made for R three and not R four? Cause these are the smaller residential. You know, from moderate density in R two to small lots in R three, to small small lots in R four.
Yeah. Good question. No, it's, it's, it's an exist, it's existing language that's probably been that way for a long time, but not that, not that that's right. It, it certainly could be, now that we're changing this, we could certainly change it to R three and R four. I don't, I don't know why it's like that. That's.
Okay. Well, my, my reaction is that I you know, being, I have a little bit of property and I can pretty much, I would not be, I can pretty much do what I wanna do because I have a little bit of property and I wouldn't want to prevent people with smaller lots from taking advantage of um, solar. Um, but I can see where it would be problematic when you're close, these are smaller lots, so you're closer, you're gonna put up an array. Let's just talk about ground mounted and you're like, could be five feet from somebody property line or something like that, so it seems reasonable that we might require some kind of the proper term is, but some kind of, not fencing, but
Screening.
Screening, thank you.
And uh, we don't currently require accessory buildings to be screened.
Correct.
So that could be a, you know, if we were going to.
So, I mean, it can be tied to if it's within ten feet of the boundary line or, I mean, I, I'm just making stuff up right now.
We have a height limitation on fencing. I mean, I would think that the screening would not, would be above fencing.
You also have concern that you don't want the screening to block the sun and the real.
What I was thinking, we have panels and you wouldn't want a structure screening something to block your panels, so you can't suck up any sunlight. That could be a problem too, if you're on a very small lot.
We have a lot of lots with mature trees, so your options of where you're gonna put your solar array are really limited.
But that's. Cut trees down.
Yeah, the ZBA one that came up a few months ago, that was part of, I think, the problem. They were trying to get, given their lot an optimal. But they didn't discuss, if we go suboptimal to stay within the zoning requirements, this is what we lose, or this is what the additional cost is or anything else, because there were other options. And I think that's where things ended up going negative was their optimal situation required incursion into the setback.
And what was the setback?
The rear setback was fifty, was fifty.
And that, the rear lot was angled and their array was gonna go this way, so it was only one portion of it.
Yeah, it was one side and they were restricted by their secondary septic field or something that limited where they could put it. But again, it's all in the Z, but it, it's still getting back to the basic, should there be some relief like decks get? And I think that's gonna be an interesting discussion because being on the ZBA, my personal is there's so many different things that could come up with fencing trees or whatever. You almost have to do this on an individual basis, which means getting variance relief rather than trying to figure out how you write an ordinance to cover it.
Cover everybody.
To cover all the eventualities.
For solar without uh, wind, wind power. And because they are making lots of new residential things that people can buy, flowers and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah, cause right now. Yeah, yeah, cause right now the wind, and that's the underlying part. Right now. Um so there are. Um you can exceed the heights.
Right.
And so forth, but. Um certainly, they're not in the.
Big area.
Yeah.
Right, but would you include that in the, you know, going in, into the setback area?
I didn't hear what you said.
I don't know if there would be the same.
So there, yeah, there's new systems for wind and um. You know, would you allow? Like, say somebody wants to have wind power. And they also want to go into these setback areas. Would that be something that you include too, or is this just going to be solar?
Yeah, I think typically the wind doesn't have the same footprint that solar.
We have enough. Area with tree lines, you want to be away from the tree line, and if you're looking at a property and saying. To get optimal wind power, I've gotta be as far from the tree line as possible, so the wind comes down. And to generate the power you want to use to be green and be, you know, zero emissions. You may have to put your wind. I mean, I can see the situation coming up, I don't know enough about the systems.
Yeah, I mean, there's new ones that where they make better, like, they look like flowers and they're really large structures and, I'm sorry.
In like trees.
Yeah, yeah, so they're.
But I'm getting back.
Attractive, but.
I'm getting back to, at least at the moment of it's an accessory building, and if you want the variance. That's why the Z B A exists.
And again, are you, you know, are, so you're gonna allow the solar but not the wind?
No, I'm, I'm just saying both, and to me, it's. Until there's.
I think both are. That request was, you know, to look at, and is there anything that makes sense to give, if? I think a couple of things, one, if um, you know, we are. The trustees did. Pass the resolution to for carbon neutrality by twenty thirty-five, which requires. An awful lot of renewable energy generation. Two, is, I mean, that sort of assumes that then there is, you know, a, a property right. To be able to generate your own power. And yeah. But for instance, you know, there um. There've been more um. Leniencies to, you know, the placement of generators. As we're just found, that was one example, so I think there's a question. Is there flexibility that we put in the ordinance, or is there some ordinance language that we could make it? Easier for the Z B A to grant variances based on certain criteria?
I think, as you're aware. I think the Z B A's got, I mean, this particular example. They had the septic field as a limiting factor, they had overhead trees as a limiting factor. They didn't. Come in, because it's up to the applicant to bring the data in to convince the Z B A, and the Z B A by, as Doug noted, by default. Isn't supposed to be a rubber stamp, it's supposed to be hard to get a variance. That means being prepared, and we've talked in the Z B A and Kevin, you've mentioned. There's not. There's not a lot of material to educate the public on how to present well to a Z B A. And those who come in and present well. Tend, if they've done their homework correctly, tend to get the variance. Because they've done the homework and they, they know what the criteria of the Z B A considers. And they know how to present it in a way to say, okay, we've considered all these, here are all the factors, this is why we want this. So there, there's, there's a twofold, it's hard if you don't know the process. To get approval. But we're also, how do you construct the ordinance? To consider all the variations. Because. We have tweet, do we, do we wanna sacrifice? Canopy. In lieu of giving setback relief? I think the answer is. Depends. But it, but that's why it's an individual.
And there's some of those things, that's why the Z B A exists, because there are some things you just can't.
Yeah.
Put right into an ordinance.
And this particular example, the neighbor immediately to the east, whose setback wasn't being infringed. Called the array an eyesore. But if the array had been within the setback limits, they have no choice, they don't get the option of, hey, put up a screen or hide it from us. The neighbor could have done what they wanted. The neighbors behind, whose setback was, said, go ahead. We don't care, we think this is a good thing. How do you do these? In the ordinance? When, okay, it's an extra cost to go to the Z B A, but. You know, for, for the short term. That may be the. Least complicated solution. I don't know.
Doug, is there anything that you can think of that you could put? It, that would help in the ordinance language to make it. Easier to make the case to the Z B A. I mean, I don't know.
Uh, that, not necessarily, everyone, you know, all variances have to. As. You know, Commissioner Walsh just mentioned, all Z B A cases. Have to prove that they, you know, have a practical difficulty, they all have to prove the same thing. And the things they have to prove aren't. Optional, you know, those are contained within public and. Tended in public act one ten, I mean, you have to prove those things. So um. It would be difficult. To alter, in my opinion. Somehow alter what the zoning board of appeals looks at. I think it would be easier just to, if you want these instead of. So I just look at the zoning ordinance, so the two biggest residential zoning districts in the township are agricultural. Agricultural has a thirty foot side yard setback and a fifty foot rear yard setback. The next biggest residential district is the R one district, which has a twenty foot side yard setback and also a fifty foot rear yard setback. So. It would just seem to me, and it's not, this part is not uncommon, I've seen a lot of zoning ordinances that have exceptions for. Accessory structures, depending on the accessory structure, I think someone mentioned decks. So typically, there's some kind of standard for deck encroachments. There certainly could. If, if the planning commission township board so desired, it would not be. Odd or out of. You know, character for a zoning ordinance to have an exception for a certain kind of accessory structure. If you wanted to allow. You know, a, a solar array, you know, standalone solar array. For a single family or a commercial business, instead of a thirty foot side yard setback, a twenty foot side yard setback, and then a twenty five foot rear yard setback. I've seen accessory structures. Detached accessory structures be as close to one foot setback for rear insides. And so. I've seen that in zoning ordinance, I'm not suggesting we do that, but. Really, it's up to, it's really gonna be up to the community, what, what you want to do, but having that kind of exception would not be. Uh. Would not be odd, that would be, you know, I've seen a lot of those kinds of exceptions in zoning. But I, I'd rather do that than try to change the way the zoning board of appeals looks at.
Yeah, Doug, what are the minimum, what are the, what's the smallest setback in the R three, R four?
Uh, R three goes to um. Thirty-five front, fifteen side, thirty-five rear. R four is a thirty-five front, ten foot side, thirty-five rear. So ten foot is the closest side yard setback, and that's in the R four district.
And Laura's memo, she said, shouldn't an exception be considered? With the uh rear yard setback similar to decks, what is the setback for decks?
Yeah, it, it's, it's weird because it's ten feet, right? It, it can encroach ten feet into the setback, which is kind of weird, because. Yeah, but it, that, which is kind of. Weird, because you have different setbacks, so the impact is different in the different zoning ordinances. Or, yeah, the different districts, I should say.
Yep, so decks can encroach ten feet. Um, you know, our most common zoning district where we're dealing with this is, it would be an R one district, and the rear yard setback's fifty feet. So in theory, you could have your house right at the fifty foot setback and then extend your deck ten feet past your house. Into the, into the required rear yard. And then that would give you a forty foot decks.
Yeah, in that example.
But it also could be the, either the R three or the R four, and it would give you a twenty-five foot setback.
Doug, I have a question about that deck, because our attention was brought.
I don't understand with the smaller lot size.
Yeah, it, because it was a. I, I think the theory probably was. You're closer anyway, and a deck is lower. And it doesn't get the massing, so it really didn't matter, but. Maybe to me, a percentage is better than. You know, a.
Maybe it just makes sense that people on smaller lots have to use rooftop. So.
It would depend on how your house is positioned, how big your roof is, trees, fences, other people's structures. It, it's a lot. If you don't have a lot of roof.
Yeah, it can be tough to find it in a smaller lot.
And how many panels do you, are you allowed to have for what, for what you're trying to get electricity for? Cause you don't get to choose that. The electric company chooses that for you, they tell you how many panels you can have.
Or the maximum.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, um, it, I mean, another one would be, this would allow some flexibility that. Um, you know, the. Uh, the structure of the. Solar couldn't impinge on the setback, so if you did a pole mounted, you know, you could, the. Panel could go into the setback, it's sort of like an eve going into the setback. I mean, that would be, allow a little more flexibility, and if you did something that was more streamlined, where it's a pole. You know, you'd have, you could extend more into the setback, I mean, that would be another little. You know, change. What they do.
They make the mechanized ones that will actually pivot to get.
Sure.
Optimal sun throughout the day, and if your pole is in the right spot for the morning. But your structure pivots, so it infringes on the setback in the afternoon based on sun direction.
Yeah, and they, and they make, you know, some of the racks. If you look at the one at the fire station, it has, you, you know, it's, it's pretty clean, because it has poles. And then it.
It's stationary.
Yeah, and it's, but it, but it's fixed, but the, the pole, the other racking, or typical racking. Has almost like the structure is a triangle and it just marches along, so. Um, and there isn't much overhang, but when you do the cleaner poles, it might overhang as much as. Uh, three or four feet.
Yeah, if, if I could, if I could add something to Commissioner Walsh's comment. Um, and maybe Kim, maybe tag along on Kim's comment. Is that. I, I don't think. This comes up very often. I think um solar, standalone solar panels that require a variance. It's very infrequent. And is this your recollection? Commissioner Walsh, I mean.
There's been two that I'm aware of since I joined in November of twenty eighteen. Yeah, one, you were on Jan, was it twenty nineteen, I think, Mary.
So that's five years, four, five years, and there's been two. You know, I. I would. You know, I, I'm not a, I'm not saying we don't do this, because it would be a relatively easy thing to do, easy amendment to make. But um. I, I, I think. There's not been many, and sometimes when you don't have many variances being requested, there might not be a reason to change your zoning ordinance, that's kind of a typical. Rule of thumb. Um, it seems like most people have been able to meet this standard. But uh. Again, uh it's completely up to the township on how you wanna go, but it. This doesn't come up very often.
I'm glad you brought this up, because. It felt like. That this was a problem, it's, it's a recurring problem, so I'm glad you, you brought that up.
And but solar's becoming so much more popular now than it was in twenty eighteen, it's easier to do, it's less expensive. And as these. Large housing developments go in. And maybe we're, Brian, maybe I'm projecting too far down the future, might this become more of a problem, if people wanna do it?
And that was the discussion at the Z B A, we, we, we brought two things, we talked about the whole house generators being a substantial property, right? We've had two of those in the same timeframe since I've been on the Z B A. Nothing's changed, the Z B A just recognizes, at least this Z B A, that it's a substantial property, right, and we tend to be more lenient. If you listen to the meeting. That the solar came up, that was a big part of the discussion, that we think solar, particularly given what the township wants, is going to be a substantial property, right? And I think that then colors how the Z B A analyzes. The presentation to say, yes. The township wants people to go. Environmentally friendly, they want net zero or whatever. We will take, at least as far as I'm concerned, as I'm on the Z B A, I take that into consideration, and that's part of the reason I voted. Against the motion was, we want people to do this. And what they were asking for seemed reasonable, given some of the other considerations. But we struggled, I mean, it was a three-two vote on that Z B A, we struggled with the decision. But the one thing we agreed on is, we think this is going to be a substantial property, right?
You're using that term, is that defined anywhere in the, in the ordinances?
It's one of the criteria.
For Z B A to consider.
For the Z B A to consider.
Is there a list of those items that are considered that?
It's up to the Z B A as it stands, so the minute you change members, you can change.
What if we don't want them to be able to change? Can't define it, it can't be defined.
I.
Doug, did you have a?
It's supposed to be, like, when they say like a substantial property, right, it's. What they're talking about is a substantial property right that others within the district enjoy. So we're not supposed to be, you're not, the zoning board of appeals is supposed to consider, if someone's asking for something. If a whole bunch of people in the neighborhood have the same thing.
Yeah.
They're supposed to consider. Now, whatever that thing is, there's not, whether it's a garage in the setback, or a deck in the setback, or. Who knows what, you know, uh. But we're, we're not supposed to deny. A substantial. Um. Right, or that, that others enjoy, I think that the language says something like that, and it's one of the criteria for, for variants.
Yes.
Thank you.
So it, it seems to me, I'd like to just get people's thoughts, I mean, I mean, there, it could be something as minor as. Um. The intent of, you know, supporting the flexibility of, of, of. Um. You know, renewable energy that um ground mount solar could um impact, it could. Um, go into the setback, ten percent of the setback or something, the side and the rear. Yeah. Um, you know, you could do something like that, versus you could just keep it as it is and not. Um, and they would need to make their case to the zoning board of appeals, so it's, it's sort of like, do you feel like? Based on the. Priorities, needs. Requests that came to the planning commission after that zoning board, do, do we want to include any flexibility or not? I think that's what I wanna sort of get the temperature of. And then if we, and if it's no, we don't think we need to provide any flexibility, then. Um, then we move on, if we think. If there's a majority of people that think we should provide some flexibility, and that, then we can continue with the discussion of. What that flexibility be, so I, I, I sort of wanna get a, yeah, a, a.
I could, I would jump in, uh. Based on what Doug is saying, it seems to me like a, a property right. I'll frame that based on. Um, in times of, of our climate crises. Um, to not allow a homeowner to have alternatives. Um. Doesn't seem. It seems like they should be allowed to have alternatives. Because we are in a climate crisis.
So does that mean you think we should look at some flexibility? Okay.
I agree.
Laura, where are you?
I agree, um, however, I also have problems with. Becoming like the large antennas. On my property, I disposed of six large antennas that were dumped on it, you know, so. Yeah, they came from various neighbors, I'm assuming. And uh it was amazing, it was like, I couldn't believe the number. And uh, it was amazing. It was like I couldn't believe the number. So I just feel like, you know, this structure could eventually become. Like an antenna also.
Oh, obsolete, meaning?
To a degree, yeah, and just decrepit and.
Well, there's language in there for decommissioning.
That's my point, you know, that you gotta be careful, I think.
Maybe it could, maybe it could be, I mean, you could make it. You know, you could frame it as active, you know, it has to be producing, right? If it's not producing, then, yeah, of course you have to enforce that too.
Yeah, that's true. But you have to, you think with solar panels, DTE is paying attention to what you're doing. Is there any other power company in the township or is it just DTE?
I think it it there might be Consumers Energy.
Not in our township.
Not at all.
DTE is minding your business, ours anyway, with the solar. Yes, they are. So if it's not working right. Answers are they're gonna have something, they're gonna be happy it's not, but.
But it could be, yeah, I don't know.
But yeah, some language about heat conditioning or something like that probably would.
Just that it has to be, it has to be a, you can't be an abandoned.
Yep.
It can be abandoned. Okay, thoughts, uh?
I agree with Laura that um, if we include flexibility for solar, it should be flexibility.
For wind.
For wind. I don't know that wind has the same issues, but I think we could include it. How however, I would suggest that we consider adding. Uh, language in the solar, well, in the in the accessory solar and wind ordinance, whatever we call it. That it be considered, that this is considered a um. Oh, what's the term? Substantial property. Right, right in that ordinance. That way, there would be no doubt that what the community thinks. If indeed, everybody else agrees with that.
It was that, yeah, we think we should have some flexibility.
Yep, and for both.
For both, which, yeah, brought up.
Yeah, Laura.
Thoughts?
I don't know. I've kind of gone all three hundred and sixty degrees around. It's because, um, like I said, when I, when the issue first came to us, I was like, okay, well, this is. Seems to be an issue that's happening often, and now I find out it's really not an issue that's happening often. But I do understand the point that, you know, this is the future, so. I do agree with the, what what Bob just said about, you're gonna do it for solar, you should do it for wind.
Laura.
Or Laura, sorry, or should we say renewable?
Well, I guess. For me, that gets into, what do we do when someone comes in and says they want to put a chicken coop? Because if they have their own eggs, they're not driving, it's greener or whatever, and my chicken coop, does that include ten feet in? That's, we we s- do we open a can of worms we may not want to open?
Well, we don't have to address that in this ordinance.
Right, no, but I I think it needs to be discussed, is I guess where I'm back to.
And I have another question that brings up, can geobores go in the setbacks?
Do what?
Can geobores go in the setbacks? For geo, it's underground. There isn't anything above the ground, a bore, yeah. Is there anything?
I don't think there's anything in the ordinance that discusses that.
I'm, because they wouldn't be considered an accessory structure if it's underground. It it doesn't have, it could go in the setbacks or the front setback or whatever, okay. All right, I'm I'm just thinking about that renewables piece.
You're as survivalist as your underground shelter, then you have to.
No, that's not covered.
Only thing I would, I would caution with the uh, wind.
Yeah. With the wind, okay.
Residential grade wind power is um, that those those setbacks are mostly based on fall zones. So.
And what, fall zones?
Fall zone. So you can't really, you can't really allow that to be ten feet because if the thing falls over. It could hit the house next to it.
Yeah, the new ones.
I gotta find this.
The airport's got the ones that stand upright that are just veins that spin that don't take much space.
But you could also, you could also just talk about, I mean, it could encroach in the in the setback, but. It he, it would be the fall, eh, you know, if it's a shorter, a different type of wind scoop or whatever. It 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 it, the fall zone couldn't be, couldn't be outside of the property line or something like that, you could say. And that would prevent it from.
It's tough.
Because that's directional.
No, no. Should there be scraping?
You could also require planting.
A good point, that's why I think we need more discussion.
Okay, well, then let's do this. It sounds like there's support to do some kind of flexibility. So the next piece would be, what would be the parameters around that flexibility?
Maybe with the, yeah, maybe with the the wind towers. We may allow for the se- over to the setback with those ones that just. Smaller ones that would meet the issue, they fall down and also. So, yeah, I think we need to have some discussion too.
Okay, so also, I think the other thing with the solar that we might want to do, the parameters is the um. The height, because you can stack multiple. Panels and you might want to, if it encroaches, put a a maximum height on the array or. Uh, you know, if if it encroaches on the setback, you know, so you don't get somebody who's stacking, you know. Um, a whole set of panels that's twenty feet high.
Is there a noise? Wind poles?
Noise?
No, the commercial ones have noise.
Yeah, the 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 other ones do too. They can.
The residential can, okay, that's cool.
It's in the or, I think it's in the ordinance now.
Okay, so it sounds like we want to structure some feasibility and we need to cut, we need to look at. Um, I will reach out to a couple of solar installers around the height thing so we can come up with a reasonable. Uh, height, because I don't want, I can just see somebody, well. Uh, that would be mean to your neighborhood. Um, and any other uh, parameters that we want to look at. So we, and uh, Laura has some um, really interesting wind to distribute, so um. Any other things? So there's. With wind.
Yeah.
And if, so there there could be a a noise.
There is, there is a sound when in the language.
Language.
Proposed, so.
Hopefully it's not sixty-five D. That would be above our our proposed ordinance.
At what point though?
At the nearest outer wall of the nearest dwelling located on an adjacent non-participating property. Well, that's solar versus wind.
I mean, this is.
Or the sat, the noise of the wind.
Yep.
You know, fifty-five, I'm gonna say eight. At the nearest. Uh, wall of the nearest dwelling that is not.
Yeah, his his honor.
These are so cool.
Yes.
Move on.
Okay, reports, reports.
We're done?
Um, so we're gonna look at um, some parameters that around allowing for the encroachment. And I think, are people okay with like a percentage encroachment as opposed to like a.
I was about to say, it looks like a footage.
A footage?
Let's talk.
Okay, we'll continue.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I can live with that.
Okay, um, there was one report posted, um, we'll go through. The other report. I just took, kicked Douglas, yes. All right, so um, and so planning one was a chair report. I did not hear, I I would like everyone to email me with what their chosen um. Uh, continuing education piece is so we can do that.
I'm working on that. Everybody see him in it with the surgery.
Uh huh, right, yeah, so make that a homework assignment, so we come next time with what we're planning on doing. Okay, and it just, so there's a coordination. All right, thank you. Uh, Board of Trustees, Kathleen?
Yes, I I I look back, the the only significant thing is tomorrow, we're looking at the budget for planning. So generally, the budget survey.
You're going through different chunks of it. I think things that just are information that we um. If we do do this, um, look at a zoning. Uh, piece, they'll be a chunk of consultant time. And I think the other piece was ESTF for the. This, the sustainability fair and the composting slash recycling of like forty thousand. Okay, um, those were the special projects. ZBA?
I have a meeting in January and I haven't received any notification of a February meeting yet.
And Kim, are you still willing to put in your, uh, for the DDA? We had talked about that.
Do we still have time to do that?
Hey, Kim will do that. Okay, we don't have anyone for the road advisory committee. Um, I said I would temporarily do the land preservation, so I need to get on that. Um, and Bob, you had agreed to.
PPP.
The PPP.
That next meeting is on the twelfth.
Okay.
So I will, I I've got it on my calendar.
Great, I have to put the OBCs on mine. You're in River Watership Council, there?
Well, there's nothing really to report, although the um. We have an upcoming meeting for our. They call it the um, partners meeting, where we sit down with a smaller group and it's actually. Uh, working on what can be good for the middle here on, which is us. So instead of, I mean, the board of, the the board of directors is not really, it's so high level that it really isn't anything to report back to. Us. That is, I'll I'll tell you a little bit what that is.
Okay.
Little bit, our meeting is February twenty seventh. That's only every two months, though.
I had one question because I think they passed the legislation about the inspection of the um. Septic fields.
Oh, did they pass?
I believe they did.
They did, I thought they got not even.
I don't know. Oh, it was.
Did they even have a hearing then? Okay, well.
Actually, ask and see if that did, and because that would be good to put in um, the newsletter if.
Septic legislation, inspection.
Yeah, legislation if that passed.
Okay.
Okay, ESTF meets next Thursday. Western Wasna Regional Advisory Group, didn't quite get that group.
Jan came and presented.
All right.
Back in January, early January.
Looks like Chelsea and Sullivan are, were talking with them about. Oh, okay, so, thank you.
Uh, and. Presented to all the communities about net zero and some of the programs that are going on within. The twenty thirty project and the Wasna County, what was the other one?
Oh, yeah, Beth Gibbons, who's the resilience director.
emanating out of the county, um, and people were interested in that. It was, one of our members is uh, the the new supervisor. Of Lima Township, and he's a a long time farmer. And he indicated that there was some literature out there that solar. What what did it do, Jen?
Uh, yeah, that that, it it's pretty easy to look at the debunking of that one, yeah, that. Um, the utility scale, solar attracted um, uh, severe weather.
Yes, attracted severe weather.
Yeah.
So Jen and I were talking about that, that needs a little bit of follow up, but um, people were really receptive, I thought, to the presentation. Um, I think on January seventeen, eighteenth, Chelsea. City of Chelsea just had a a housing, um. Forget what they call it, but uh.
Or was it to discuss?
No, it was a housing forum. So, um, I believe it's passed, because I was gonna go to it and.
If you can, uh, follow up on that, because that might be something, I know housing has been an issue, you know, that the trustees have been talking about too. And it it might be good to hear what they did and see if there was, there's something that maybe we could do inside too, then. Talk about the issues of of affordable housing.
Yeah, um. Okay, but um. The next meeting folks may want to come to in February. And I can get that date for you. That's gonna be uh, the county update. All their initiatives and what they're looking at, they're looking at spending money on and that kind of stuff. So I think that's.
Okay, all right. Any other updates that people wanna? Or announcements? That will um, open and uh, public comment at nine oh seven. Uh, is there anyone here that would like to address the planning commission? All right, just one on mine. Paula?
Yeah, Paula Globerson, uh, Siouxs resident. I I uh, found it, this whole Jackson Boulevard concept uh, interesting. One of the things that I watch is the DDA situation and what they have control over. Because they're discussing, they want to have their control of roads, control, I mean, they have to go to the board. But depending on what the board is, whenever, I currently have supported this board. Uh, that's currently in place, but I go. Is is this extension way down there going to be that the DDA? Because they're suggesting they want to have their own control mechanism. Um, for certain rules or whatever, I don't know. I I, it's a mystery to me. And um, I can say that I'm actually pro-residential along that area. Um, different types of housing for different types of people and economic needs. But that that, that's something that needs to be considered when you're looking at this, what the actual overlay. And I do like the idea that you have some specifications of what in different parts along the boulevard can be. And as everyone knows, I've been concerned about sewer in uh, Siouxs Township for about thirty years. So that needs uh, uh, with OHM, but thank you very much for a good meeting. I want to thank uh, Ms. Moore for all the J-Rod. I had watched all those meetings and the bus transit. And uh, and to everyone, I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. No others. All right, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
And supported by Commissioner Moore. All those in favor, please say aye, aye, any opposed? Uh, our public comment is closed at nine ten. All right. All right, um. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, support.
Okay, that we have hidden more, um, any further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, we are adjourned at nine ten. Thank you very much.